Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to your city council meeting. I'm Mayor Blackburn. I'll call us to order for October 27th. First thing we're going to remember to do is turn off our cell phone. Then I'd like to take a moment to remind us that as we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nisburk, Matilla, Warm Springs, Yakimaun, and other tribes who stewed in this land for generations, recognize the lasting impact of colonialism, and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. And then I just would like to acknowledge that one of our counselors is not here tonight. I know that she had a death in the family and had to be called away at the last minute. So, uh, we are, we are six instead. Now let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I proudly introduce the flag of the United States of America. May your love life and righteousness stand one nation under my God, indivisible, wherever it may be and just as for all.
Mayor, if I may, could I ask if we could do our presentation first?
Great idea.
With Hood River 101 folks and then business from the audience so they can go to the pizza party?
We have a fun graduation ceremony this evening. Welcome all. So fun to see your familiar faces in the front row. Jackie, do you want to kick us off?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a heads up, I'm going to be giving this presentation bilingually, so I'll be just pausing and going into Spanish between. Buenas tardes, alcalde y consejo. Um, so to get started today, um, I have the honor of presenting our Hood River Civics Academy, uh, Hood River 101 graduates. Hoy día tengo el honor de presentar el grupo de graduados de clase de educación clínica. Give me one minute to... Oh wait. Sorry, forgot I need to... Sorry, give me one second. There we go. Um, so real quick, I just wanted to share some of the goals of this class. I know some of you have welcomed graduates before and some of you haven't, so I just want to review that for everyone. Um, para empezar voy a compartir algunos de las metas del curso. Um, and that's to inform the public, bring awareness to the, to our city operations. Um, break down barriers between the public and local government, uh, build relationships, engage in conversations, um, work with our lead, our current community leaders and foster future ones, and also ensure that this, uh, course be accessible to everyone and in particular, use the Spanish speaking community. Um, las metas son compartir información sobre la ciudad, tratar de romper barreras entre el gobierno y el público, construir y mejorar relaciones y apoyar a líderes hoy y para el futuro, y tener clases asequibles para todos. Um, so just a quick overview, this is our third time offering the class and the second time that we've done it in Spanish. Um, and I want to thank our partners at The Next Door for helping us to put this on. Um, give Rocío and Lily at The Next Door a thank you. This was part of a, um, a grant that we, uh, received with The Next Door. Um, the course consists of six classes. Each of the class focuses on a different department of the city and we provide childcare and dinner, um, during all of the classes. Um, esto fue la tercera vez ofreciendo el curso y la segunda vez en español y quiero agradecer a The Next Door por su apoyo con ese curso a Rocío y a Lily de The Next Door. Uh, hay seis clases. Um, cada clase tiene como un enfoque en cada departamento de la ciudad. Um, y también tuvimos cena y cuidado de niños en todas las clases para que sean asequibles. Um, so just share some photos. Um, voy a compartir algunas fotos. Um, of our fun classes that we really strive to make interactive. Las clases tratamos de hacerlos interactivos, divertidos. Um, we really like focus with the hands-on learning, getting to see equipment, technology. Um, un enfoque también en aprender como de mano con tecnología, equipaje. Um, give it, getting towards the facilities, tours de los edificios. Um, using games, usando juegos. We did a, a budget game and a trivia. Tuvimos un, uh, un juego de finanzas y también de trivia. And also lots of times for presentations, questions and answers, conversations. También con mucho tiempo con presentaciones, preguntas y respuestas, conversaciones. Um, and so here's just a few more photos. Any questions before we celebrate? Hay más preguntas para nosotros? If not... All right. Hand it over to you then, Mayor.
I'll talk here, then we'll go over. So congratulations, John. I'm going to talk into this microphone. I have your diplomas, so please come on up. Juan Martinez.
Congrats.
Joel Perallo.
Congratulations as well.
Thank you so much. Gracias.
That's a question. Norma Ruiz. Teresa Ocampo. Daisy Matias. Viviana Hernandez. Erika Rosio Suarez Real. Perisitas Guadarrama.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, oh.
You're okay? Don't worry.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Photo?
Yeah.
Jackie?
No, 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 no.
He just started having those.
Okay, puntos, por favor.
All right, I'll do it.
One moment, though.
Hang on, camera. I love to sit somewhere. Well, maybe not. Listen.
Will you really think so?
We'll now have business from the audience. Uh, we've had some energy on this topic of late, so I now will read this script. Uh, no person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct during this time. There shall be no audience demonstrations such as applause, cheering, display, signs, or conduct disruptive. Such conduct may be cause for immediate termination of business from the audience by the mayor. No person shall address council without first being recognized by the mayor. Please state your full name for the record when it is your turn. And if folks could keep it to about three minutes, we do have a timer um, that will enable us to do, uh, conduct business expeditiously. We're going to start with Steve Grove followed by Liz Tierhar.
It's going to be so much more elegant, but also harder to learn.
Come up to the, and, uh, yeah, thanks, Abigail.
Here, and so the folks at home can see you and make sure you're close to this microphone.
Okay.
You're set.
Uh, good evening. I'm Steve Grove. I live over by Wilson Park and we've been having more and more problems with the homeless lately. Uh, I've gathered several of our neighbors which are all really concerned. The biggest problem is that we are getting a lot of conflicting information from the police, from the dispatch to the first police officer, to the second police officer, to the third police officer. It's all inaccurate or it's not the same what the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not used to.
Okay, you're doing great.
Basically, when we, uh, when I called dispatch to tell them there's a problem going on, they tell me that there's nothing they can do and that this is just, uh, there was a homeless person sleeping in there with some tarps in the park. The, uh, first neighbor called, the police showed up, they left her be. I called the dispatch after I went over and, uh, was throwing the, the ball for the dog. The woman came out of the tent, she got very aggressive with me. I ended up calling the police. They said they could remove her and when I started quizzing them on whether this could be a coming homeless encampment, she said that their, their hands were tied, that there's nothing they could do. The first police officer came over and he basically reiterated that there's not a lot they can do. This is, um, uh, goes to state politics and not local. The last cop that came over said, no, this is absolutely inaccurate. They're allowed to be here from dusk till dawn, or I'm sorry, they're not allowed to be here from dusk till dawn. And that public parks are closed for camping after that. So, I, I, we're just getting a lot of conflicting, um, information and this isn't the, the, the only time that this has happened. We've also had somebody that was staying behind the, the playground there that had cut the bolts on the playground, were entering and, um, living back there were just rubbish everywhere. And when I, uh, confronted her, she got really violent with. And, um, living back there were just rubbish everywhere, and when I confronted her, she got really violent with me. One of my labors, I own a construction company, followed her around for a while. She went around the corner and started trying to break into garages and they ended up arresting her, and it was the same woman that was trying to break into Mike's Ice Cream, et cetera. Um, and then I've had the, uh, police just walking around the park, and I said, uh, you know, after forty minutes, I said, what are you looking for? And he just said, a gun, but all I found was a crack pipe, and there was no other information on that. So it just, there's a natural progression of people coming up from Indian Creek, cutting across the playground, and then, uh, coming through our neighborhoods and stealing everything that's not locked down. Uh, as you know, our neighbor was killed a few months ago last spring, so everybody's hyper vigilant and we're wondering what our rights are and like, what is the city willing to do to keep these people from setting up a homeless camp? Is this a, a real possibility that at some point they can set up tents in our, our front yard? And, and not just that, we also had an RV pull-up, um, not too long ago, me and all the neighbors all called the police. They said there's nothing they could do because the parking enforcement went away for the weekend, they wouldn't even set a patrol car up to be like, you can't camp here. They set out their, their, um, their slide-outs, they set up camp for the entire weekend. And unfortunately, me and the guy next door left, so our wives are at home with our young kids and somebody camping. The amounts of space between my front lawn and that is, it's basically turns into a one-way street there. So I mean, we're like talking twenty feet away, there's somebody right outside the front door.
Thanks for coming down. The, the way it works, I don't think you've been here very many times speaking to us, we're not going to discuss this now. We're taking y'all input, and then there is a time at the end of the meeting where council will discuss. Thanks for coming down, Liz. And then Joe Jordan.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Blackburn and members of City Council. My name is Elizabeth Terhar. I live at two eighteen May Street. I'm a concerned resident and parent. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss the pressing issue of unhoused in our community, focusing on the balance of public safety and compassionate services. Um, I'm motivated both by personal experiences and my desire to see effective humane solutions implemented in Hood River. First, I want to express my support and admiration for the important work that the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council has done. Um, to provide shelter and housing. Um, however, my family and I have observed some significant gaps in service, particularly in the warmer months. Uh, as a parent, my priority is ensuring safety in public spaces like parks and trails. That they're welcoming and safe for residents, especially children. The current situation where individuals are camping in areas designated for families and children has become unsustainable and exacerbated public safety issues. My family and I have personally experienced and observed several incidents that highlight the complexity of this issue. Um, you know, as Steve mentioned, um, we've seen encampments in public parks. Um, a friend of mine was hosting a children's educational event at the Nichols Conservation Easement. And they had to move the teaching program due to a home, active homeless camp at that site, which compromised the teaching lesson to show children water quality monitoring. Um, um, there's really a lack of enforcement, what I'm seeing, so during Labor Day weekend. Um, a man had camped in his Winnebago directly in front of my house, uh, he was smoking marijuana in plain sight of children. When I called the police, they told me it was a code enforcement issue and that the code enforcement was not available, no action could be taken, and he stayed there for two nights. Um, I've seen concerns on local public trails. Um, a few years ago, I was hiking the pipeline with my daughter, and a houseless person had a camp set up and an unleashed dog nearly attacked my toddler. I had to pick her up and kick the dog away. I'm a dog person, I hate being in that position, but I was scared for my child's safety and my own. Uh, when I called the police, they told me it was a code issue and that nothing, um, could be done about it. Um, and there was no effective resolution there. Um, I was also told that it was about who was elected into office and that it was about politics and nothing could be done. Um, you know, luckily, the Hood River Soil and Conservation District had some intervention, they secured funding. Uh, for the pipeline, um, for some grants to do cleanup, and, um, they worked to change the zoning there, and so there's not overnight parking, so there is something that could be done. Um, I also, um, you know, noticed, you know, unaddressed public disturbances, so recently.
My three. If you could, if you could finish up.
Uh, well, what Steve mentioned, um, the urgency of the situation. Um, Stephen Hayes was murdered by a houseless person, and when he tried to interfere, it had, um, catastrophic results for his life. Um, the issue is really multifaceted, and as a mother, I, I really feel compassion, I know these people are someone's daughters and sons. And they need help, and so I think I'm coming to you to say, yes, I support year-round shelter and housing, um, and we need more resources, um, for shelters. Um, there's been a woman camped in front of my office.
Finish up, Liz, please.
For the last three months in extreme heat and cold, I'm concerned for people. Um, but I also am a parent and I'm concerned for safety, and I don't want to have to be the person enforcing law, I want police to do that, and so I want more code enforcement and clarity on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Joe Jordan and then Brian Tuohy.
Good evening, my, my name is Joseph Jordan, I'm here to advocate for Dog Park for the city. I know it's an issue that's been, I, I think bouncing around for quite a while, I've, I've known of, of a couple sites that have been contemplated, and I know it was on the. Part of the ballot measure year or two, I guess, last year, the new park. At, at this point, nothing has, has progressed, and I would just like to advocate that, that something progressed. I think the city's, city this size, I think, but there's a lot of dogs, I think it's a, in great need.
Thank you. Brian and then Ben Lewitt.
Um, Brian Tuohy, fifteen sixteen Columbia, Mayor Nastia, um, Ms. Elder, I don't think we've met formally, but we've had some correspondence. Um, I want to, there's some information that I submitted that should have been in your packet about the, uh, new STR. Um, platform, and there are some things that, um, for the rest of you, um, I think you're all included on at least one email, and there's been some correspondence back and forth with. With, um, Mayor and Ms. Elder, um, I want to make just a few, clarify a couple of things, there are, there are two contracts in issue, and I. Included both of them as attachments in this information that should be in your packet. The, the city contract, the, I, I, that with Deckard, that doesn't really concern me so much. I think from your perspective, the thing that should maybe concern you is that it, um, along with the, um. The Terms of Service that I'm mostly concerned about, um, specify the supremacy of California law and the contract. And so the City Council as the, uh, the Contract Board for the city, that's by city charter, that's something that is on you. And it, and it does seem that having California law take precedent over any other law and have that be the venue is unusual for City of Hood River contracts. So, so to the Terms of Service, um, the, the, the copy that I sent you that's in the packet was highlighted. So you could just scan it and look at it, and, and it's not clear to me that, that either the mayor or Ms. Elder actually got to that, and I was really clear that, that that is where. My concern was, the Terms of Service is super broad, um, it allows all sorts of things that, that frankly. They aren't just on the face of them compliant with the Oregon Consumer Protection Act. Primarily that the city is required to be the controller and the custodian of all public information. And the way that Terms of Service is written, they even hand off information to a third party, but not only are they not allowed, that are they not the custodian? Which by the contract appears they will be, but they can hand it off to a third party as a condition of using this thing. I think that's a huge red flag. And, you know, and I hope that you'll consider and, and look into that. Another issue, again, the Oregon Consumer Protection Act. Requires an opt-out provision in, in contracts in Terms of Service like this, that doesn't exist. Um, and maybe the most important thing and something we can all appreciate, given the current state of technology, and I've been involved in technology since. Since the, since the seventies, as early, things have evolved to the point where we don't even know what we don't know at this point. So, so tightening this thing up seems to make sense. I understand, like, I'm, I'm going to have to comply with this thing to continue operating my home, and, um. I mean, I'll do it under duress, I mean, but I understand, I'm going to have to do it, but I think it warrants just having a look at it. If you've got questions, you all have my email address, I'm happy to chat about it. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you're trying to, to enforce compliance to these things, I've been doing this for a long time. I've got, like, I've seen where the.
If you could finish up, please, Brian.
So anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I hope that you look at the information that, um, has been put into the packet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ben, I made myself a note and then missed it, we're going to have one other person, and then you and, uh, Dr. McBe will speak adjacent, uh, Whit, Whit, Whitaker.
I, I actually don't have anything more to add.
Okay, thank you, Whit, uh, in that case, Ben, and then Mindy.
Hi. Um, I'm here to ask, uh, the council to open a public discussion on the limit of, of the powers of the City Council. So hypothetically, someone comes before you and requests a political resolution that's outside your mission statement. There's three options, and there's only three. One is, nobody gets a resolution. You could say, I'm sorry, I agree with you, or I don't agree with you, but we don't do this for, for you or for anyone else. That's institutional neutrality, and everyone gets treated the same, that's fair. Another would to be to say, yes, you get a resolution, and you get a resolution, and you get a resolution, because everybody gets a resolution. And that would be like Halloween candy, and everyone would be treated the same, and that would also be fair. Or the only third option is some are accepted and some are rejected, and that's your current policy. Given, what's your rubric? What are the rules? Today, there are none. Um, Counselor Stefano, you, in our last discussion, you said, well, we can't be neutral, and that's true for bike lanes. But if you're not neutral on political matters outside your mission, you're picking sides. Okay, what are the rules? Let's open the discussion. Uh, Counselor Rivera, last time cited the statement on Islamophobia and antisemitism. Which is irrelevant and made it clear to me that I hadn't communicated clearly, so. I'm not, what we're talking about is if you're going to make political statements outside of your mission statement, what are the rules? Counselor Mitchell, affordable housing is your thing, establishing rules for political resolutions enables the council to focus on housing. Or homelessness, or whatever else is the focus of the city. Let's open the discussion. Mayor Blackburn, remember the third Realtor who got on that committee mistakenly? It happened, it was a mistake, but mistakes happen when people are distracted. So how can we focus on city business? That's a reasonable question. Let's open the discussion. So I favor institutional neutrality because it's completely fair. The City Council resolves to not take, not issue resolutions on political matters outside your mission statement. Okay. Um, everyone gets treated the same. Maybe someone has a better idea, I don't know. Let's open the discussion, let the people be heard, and as a community, we can figure out the rules.
Thank you, Ben.
Good evening, how are you all? Um, as a resident and small business owner in this community. Um, I personally and professionally would like to see the council stay adherent to their mission statement and to the matters that hand to them. We clearly have plenty of pressing issues that require the council to stay focused on their mission, which is affairs that affect the city and city business. Um, as an, as individuals, we retain the right for a public protest that is peaceful, for free speech, that is not hate speech. And those remain to all of us as individuals, but I just don't feel like. The City Council taking their precious time, which is already full of, uh, city business, should remain focused on the city's mission statement, which is attention to the city matters.
As I mentioned sort of briefly at the beginning, our, our custom is to receive public comment at every meeting, and then there's a, towards the end during, uh, my comments, there's sort of a forum to. Uh, for us to discuss, discuss whether we're going to place on a future agenda any of the items that we've heard this evening, so. That's, that would be the next step for any of these topics. And of course, folks can come and speak on, uh, items that are on the agenda, and then those come up during the meeting as, as scheduled. Thanks again for coming. Uh, we will now recess, I'll hand the gavel to Chair Stapina to consider the urban renewal agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I now call to order the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency Board Meeting. Uh, first thing, uh, any agenda additions or direction?
Chair there or not?
Is there any business for the audience before the Urban Renewal Agency? Anybody online, Jen? Okay. So the first item we have tonight is the consent agenda, entertaining motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Gagey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, consent agenda passes, regular business items, will the West Side District Performance and Equity Measures? Yes, thank you, Chair. Let's see. I'll pull up a PowerPoint here.
Heck, gremlins, man.
Yeah, it's a little tough today. Okay, I think I got it. Okay, great, thank you. Uh, for your patience there, so, uh, today we have the final West Side Performance and Equity Metrics, um, for the, uh, Agency Board's consideration. The goal of these metrics is for, uh, our new, our brand-new district on the west side is set. Um, not only the standards that we are going to measure our own success against, but also create, um, a communication, uh, uh, communication tool to. Explain to others what we're trying to achieve, and so that's the goal here. Um, these metrics have been discussed with, um, the Advisory Committee, uh, several times, also with the Columbia Area Transit and Parks and Rec District. Um, at a, at their board meetings, uh, because those, uh, entities really overlap with the goals and objectives of, uh, the West Side District. And, uh, at each one of those stages, uh, received valuable feedback that then made it into the final, uh, measures before you today. So in your packet, I have a table kind of listing how every, uh, measure, uh, has either been kept the same, removed, or modified. So be happy to go into any of that, but my intention tonight is just to show you the final product, and then, uh, if it meets your, uh, expectations, uh, vote on it tonight.
Thanks, bro.
Alright, there's a little lag there. Um, okay, so this is for the West Side District, um, one hundred and forty-six million dollars of, um, maximum indebtedness, uh, meant to target. Housing, uh, parks, and trails, and, and transportation. Um, it's where the majority of our remaining developable land is within our urban growth boundary. So, um, the intent is to, uh, so all the measures fit into those, those goals, those goal areas. Um, with the exception of one goal that overarches all of those goals, which is to grow taxable value. Um, so if we're not growing tax increment, we have no engine, uh, behind our urban renewal, uh, um, mechanism. Uh, and also it's, uh, our fiduciary responsibility to the overlapping, uh, taxing districts who we are, uh, redirecting tax increment from. To grow, to, uh, grow, uh, tax increment that wouldn't have otherwise existed, and to return a larger tax base, uh, to the general rolls when our work is complete. So this shows the, uh, taxable, taxable growth rate on the West Side District, it's been growing at about four and a half percent. Which is a very sluggish rate, if you consider that three percent is just what it grows under, uh, measures five and fifty. So the, uh, goals here are, it would be poor if we just continue, and if there's no effect of our investments. I have exceptional as what we were able to achieve in the waterfront district, and then good being, uh, just splitting the difference. I have exceptional as what we were able to achieve in the waterfront district and then good being, uh, just splitting the difference. Stop me at any time. I'm just gonna continue to move through these. So next, uh, uh, we have the goal of transportation infrastructure. This is a goal in and of itself, uh, for improved bike paths, uh, pedestrian roadway, or pedestrian, uh, walkways and roadways, but it's also the catalyst that is gonna be able to drive development. Because the West Side is really underserved by, uh, transportation infrastructure and that's, um, slowing, uh, the ability to, uh, develop. So, um, the West Side District is plugging, uh, funds into our unfun- unfunded projects in the transportation system plan. So these are all of the roadways that are planned for the West Side. And the goal would be to have, uh, to complete all of these over the projected lifespan of the West Side District. So by 2052, in order to do that, need to, uh, build four hundred and seventy, uh, feet of roadway per year. So this is what it would look like. Right now, we've built, um, nothing has been built on the West Side, I think, since, uh, wine country, uh, was extend, uh, extended to connect into US thirty. Um, so as we move through the years, we'll see what we're able to build. We're gonna get, um, I think about five hundred feet with Mariposa Village. Uh, the next transportation, um, um, metric is, uh, safety related. So we, uh, it's, a challenge is finding data that's specific to the West Side because it's not a census tract. It's not a town unto itself, uh, but we were able to, uh, geo, um, bound crash data from ODOT. Um, luckily, there's been no fatal injuries. It's been about half property damage only, uh, and half non-fatal, um, bodily injury, but, um, nothing fatal. And the goal here would be to keep it, uh, uh, low where we were at the pandemic. So this is gonna be a difficult one where as we build more roads and more people are driving on them, it's more opportunities for crashes. But if we can build safety into the roads as we're building roads, then hopefully we can keep, um, crash rates, um, down where they were, uh, in, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Good would be keeping them, uh, where they were prior to the pandemic. There's kind of just a natural reduction when, uh, during the pandemic when people weren't driving much. So moving on to housing, and this is where.
Grant?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just a quick one on that, on the last slide. Uh, would a better metric than for road safety be crashes per mile? Or something along those lines instead of using absolute numbers, uh, because it, I assume that if we're going to build more and more roads, there would be more and more vehicles on said roads and thus likelihood of more and more crashes goes up.
I don't know, uh, as I said, because if you look at where all the, this, uh, little dot show where the crashes are, they're like nearly all on US thirty.
Yes, yeah, they, they currently are, but assuming, assuming, uh, we build roads in the model that we're talking about building roads, extending certain roads in particular ways, building them, uh, to handle certain capacities and or speeds in particular ways, there might be, uh, a probability that those numbers change. Uh, we might see a more distribution, more crashes on, in other locations as opposed to just on thirty.
Yeah.
So, uh, would this as a metric make more sense to mess with as opposed to using just absolute numbers?
Yeah, I, I'd probably leave that question for the Agency Board. Um, it's certainly something I can do. I can divide these numbers by the lane miles.
Sure. Um, and my commentary more for the Agency Board is roads are only as safe as they are designed to be. They, people drive as fast as they are designed to be derived on. Uh, traffic engineers do things. So cons- consequences of those choices are in our hands.
Uh, moving on to housing. So the, um, West Side District added, has been adding an average of about three dwelling units per year, uh, for the last decade. There was a bump in two thousand and eleven when Hood River Crossing was built. And so that was a, a single multifamily affordable housing development. Uh, but other than that, um, development has been pretty, um, subdued on the West Side. If we were to, um, meet the goal of doing, of getting to full build out by twenty fifty-two, we'd have to average forty-five units per year. And so that's the exceptional metric. And then poor, uh, is remaining with current about three, uh, new units built every year with them splitting the difference for good. Uh, the West.
Hannah?
Sorry, I just had a quick question. Um, how many permits for new builds on the West Side were approved in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? Um, are we close to that approximate eighty-five units or eighty-four units?
Um, I think it, it's still just a handful, uh, unless you do, it, it all depends how you wanna count Mariposa Village. Then we've got a hundred and thirty. And, uh, so while we want to, um, analyze market rate housing, we also know that market rate is never gonna serve the more deeply affordable, um, rungs of the community. So we have also in the plan to build additional regulated affordable housing. Um, so we have three additional, there are three developments, um, posted here. Once Mariposa Village is, um, built, that will keep us in the exceptional column for, um, until about twenty thirty in this, um, in this model. But given that Mariposa Village took, uh, six years, it really isn't too soon to start thinking and getting into the pipeline, the next project if we're going to achieve these goals. Next is home attainability. And so if we are successful in, uh, producing more supply, uh, we expect that housing price, all else held equal, should become, uh, relatively more attainable. So a common rule of thumb in real estate is the ratio of, um, housing price to income. And, um, that being that six to one is commonly, uh, seen as, uh, you can afford a house that is six times your income. Now, interest rates come into play, uh, lots of other things come into play. That's just a rule of thumb. Uh, but median home value to median household income was at a six to one ratio, uh, back in the early twenty-tens in Hood River. And it took off, um, for several years into the twenty-tens. We did, uh, we implemented a lot of, uh, housing, uh, policies in, um, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen with the regulating of short-term rentals, uh, and also some other planning codes. We did see some slight improvements up until the pandemic. Uh, and then we shot up again into new heights of, uh, housing unattainability with the median home value being ten, ten times the median household income in Hood River in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so the goal, uh, would, next, getting to exceptional in this case would be getting us back around that six to one ratio with good being, uh, at least getting back to where we were in the twenty-tens. And, uh, I'll note that this is not from people's house, houses going down in price or down in value. It's relative to incomes. So, um, not saying that we wanna devalue anyone's home. Uh, next up is looking at, uh, this one is really relative to our middle housing, uh, construction incentive that the agency adopted about six months ago, and this provides incentives to building smaller. And so if that is successful, hopefully we would see the average square foot of new family homes in the West Side District start to tick down. Uh, so right now, the, uh, five-year running average is about two and, uh, the average new home going into the West Side being at twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, which is far above where it was prior and, um, and where, kind of, uh, hous- housing sizes were historically in the nineties and eighties and seventies. Um, and all else held, uh, all other factors held equal, a larger house is a more expensive house and both in price and then also to maintain and to heat, um, to. Councilor?
Just clarifying questions. It's a five-year running average?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in that case, then the, uh, the last few years, then I assume would, the houses would be greater than, uh, twenty-six hundred square feet-ish to, in order for that curve to.
I'd have to look at the data to confirm. I'd have, I'm happy to give you the actual, so the problem here, uh, when I said, you know, we're only building about three houses per year in the West Side, is the.
Small sample size.
Yeah, yeah, it was very bouncy if I didn't do a five-year average.
Sure, good. Uh, so if, if we're using a five-year average, your, your last few years in the average have to be higher than the prior ones in order for the line to go up. So the most recent numbers, I would wager, are higher than the average, the la- the last ones. Yeah, thanks.
And then getting into the last goal area, which is parks and trails. Obviously, we want development, we want affordability, but we also wanna maintain the high quality of life that, um, everyone in Hood River, uh, who has come before has been, uh, able to enjoy and preserving that for future generations. And so, um, the West Side Urban Renewal District also, uh, dedicates an, uh, investment allocation to, um, parks and trails development. So, uh, this measure is drawn directly from the Parks and Recreation Multi-Jurisdictional Master Plan that the city signed on to. And that's to have, um, uh, to create one, uh, half-mile walksheds from every park. So we have, uh, the two, and the stars are the two target areas that were in the Parks District's master plan. And, um, right now, about thirty, uh, four percent of the West Side URA can walk to, has a half-mile walk to a park. So this is, uh, truly walksheds following roadways or paths, um, not just as a crow flies. So this will, um, be improved when Mariposa Village, uh, gets built as well. Um, so the exceptional goal would be by twenty fifty-two, have ninety percent of the West Side walkable, uh, within a half-mile of a park. And then poor would be, uh, less than sixty percent. Uh, right now, we're at thirty-four percent. And then, um, building trail connectivity is also part of the plan. So if we want to fully build out all the tran- all the transportation system plan, uh, walking trails, then, uh, in our, uh, transportation system plan, we'll need to do four hundred and ninety feet of trails, uh, per year, I believe. Uh, Mariposa Village is getting us over a thousand, uh, but we'll need to, uh, continue to build about four hundred and ninety feet of trails every year on average, uh, to fully build out the West Side Trail Network. So we'll get a, we'll get a good bump when Mariposa Village is built, but, um, but then we need to get more on pipeline.
Will, I don't know. This actually fits, it was, for my tiny world, it was big. I can now ride my bike to Post Canyon without having to go to the end of May because the connection to car road now actually exists and used to be pretty like, do not trespass on it. Don't think I'm actually poaching on anyone. So that's an actual improvement that happened for a mountain biker. I don't know if there's a way to capture, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, oh yeah, that's one of them. Um, it's down, yeah, I have down there. So I, I actually, I didn't know that that was complete. Um, so there's another few hundred feet.
Great, thanks.
Okay, getting into equity, uh, metrics. So, uh, when we invest all of these millions of dollars into the West Side, uh, that can have the unintended effect of displacing folks if we raise up values and if new development means a lot of new people moving in. So we wanna monitor very closely to ensure that the benefits of these urban renewal investments are being, uh, equitably distributed. Um, and so here are some measures to, um, help look at that. So this is a measure of income dispersion throughout the city. It's the average, uh, income compared to the typical or median income of the city. And so if you have a bunch of very rich, uh, uh, if you have a small number of very rich households, they'll pull up the average without changing the typical or the median. And so, um, back in the early twenty-tens, the average income, uh, in Hood River was only twenty percent above the median. But most recently in, uh, we, for, um, what I have census data for, for twenty twenty-three, it was, uh, the average household income was fifty percent higher than the median or typical. So that means more and more households are just, um, in those very upper reaches of income and drawing up the average while we still have a lot of folks, um, down in the median household income range. And, um, one question I got at the Parks Board was how do we compare nationally? Is that, is this just changing everywhere? And I was actually surprised to see that the United States as a whole has been fairly consistent over time. So we, uh, have uniquely changed in our income, uh, of the, uh, distribution of our, uh, income in, in the city, uh, over this ten-year period. Uh, and so we wanna hopefully see things go back to maybe closer to where they were in the early twenty-tens if we're successful in bringing, uh, housing prices into reach for, uh, more folks. Uh, we also, uh, if we're, hopefully if we're successful in building a place for everyone, then we'll, uh, be able to continue to be a, uh, place for people in all life cycles of their, um, in all of their life cycles, including young family formations, which is, uh, when folks are typically at their lowest level of, uh, earning potential. And so, uh, Hood River County, um, has always been, uh, one of the youngest counties, uh, in Oregon. I think Benton County is the only one younger than us. And that's been a real economic, um, uh, driver for us. Um, but that has slowly changed over time as the percentage of population that's school-aged, uh, continues to decline. And it's declined across the state, but the declines have been more pronounced in Hood River. We're still above the state average. We still have more, uh, people in their childhood years than the state as a whole, but it's, um, but our advantage is, uh, is disintegrating. Um, so this is tracking that, like, uh, again, uh, kind of setting a benchmark to the early twenty-tens.
Will, could you say a couple more sentences about that? I, I think I understand the slide, but you're asserting that a young population is good economically, and I'm not sure that I quite make that connection yet.
Yeah, it is good economically, um, because you have a younger workforce. There's, I, um, but I guess the goal of this equity measure is not necessarily because we wanna drive our local economy.
Right.
It's really about having there be a place for everyone here and, uh, that, uh, folks are not pushed out to go, uh, further east or, um, basically the folks who grew up here are able to stay here, live here and create new families here and that new family, uh, formation is not helping, not happening elsewhere.
Thank you. I guess I just also am changing a few of the nouns in that sentence. We wanna have a community where folks can age in place and remain here as they become older and older, and that would change this curve.
Yes, so, um, yeah, I don't have one for the senior population. Yeah. Uh, but this also, um, ten, uh, kind of brought us into alignment a bit with the school district is another kind of, uh, piece here that as enrollment declines, um, you know, that has budget impacts for our school district and, um, seemed to align us with another taxing district.
Thank you.
Um, and then last up, this one doesn't have a target. It's more of a monitoring system. So we wanna make sure that we're not displacing, um, economically disadvantaged folks on the West Side versus elsewhere. So this is, um, the percentage of, uh, economic, economically disadvantaged students in West Side Elementary versus May Street Elementary. And so those are, that category is folks receiving, um, SNAP benefits, temporary assistance for needy families, foster students, uh, migratory students, students who are homeless. This is a category that the school district, um, tracks and can report back to us. And if we started to see a, uh, divergent pattern, I think, between West Side Elementary and, and the other side of town, that could be an early warning sign, uh, for us to look at, is the West Side District Investments having any sort of adverse impact that we wanna examine more? Um, this doesn't have a target because we don't, there's no targeted in the number of, you don't wanna, there's no good or bad number of, uh, economically disadvantaged students. We just, uh, wanna monitor this.
I think, was it, you guys remember when, um, the school district changed their boundaries? Like, where, where is that in this, um, this graphic? Because I think that they changed their, like, where the kids went to school at some point and I, I don't remember when it was. It might have been like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And I, I know the pandemic influences too, but, um, that could have changed these numbers a little bit. You guys remember that?
Absolutely.
Who was that?
And Mid Valley was involved in that, uh, formula as well. So that's quite far from here, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't know the year and.
No, but I can follow up with you. I can find out.
Great.
Uh, so this is the summary. We're all in reds and oranges right now, which makes sense because we've just started the West Side District. Um, but hopefully we can monitor these, watch this over time. The goal is, my, uh, goal is to report this, uh, with the, um, Urban Renewal Agency's annual statement, which we usually put out in January. So this would be an addendum to that. Urban Renewal Agency's annual statement, which we usually put out in January. So this would be an addendum to that. It just, uh, every year is updated while we monitor it and hopefully see these measures start to improve. Um, so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Will?
On page nine, one of our equity measures, metrics was, um, homeownership. And we have, uh, have been here, that's going to be deleted from the metrics. Um, because it apparently did not resonate when presented with the other district boards or other folks. Uh, tended to lead to an ancillary discussion about value of homeownership versus renting, government's role in influencing private markets. Given that for the last seventy, eighty years, residential home equity markets have been one of the biggest drivers in wealth generation in the country. And as currently constructed, I don't necessarily see that necessarily changing anytime immediately. Um, what is the impetus, uh, for deleting that or not necessarily tracking that as a means for folks to, uh, bring up their own financial, financial position or equity position, um, broadly?
Yeah, I think you're hitting the, the nail on the head with why that was in there to begin with, um, was because it is, um, a way that, uh, Americans have historically built savings, um, but whenever I brought it up in public, like, different sessions, it didn't, that didn't seem to connect for folks and we went off on rabbit trails, um, and it, so it didn't seem just how I said in here, it didn't seem to resonate with, with people, um. And we have, you know, quite a number of equity metrics in there already, so I think we have a good amount, um, and, uh, you know, I think it's important to be comprehensive, get every sort of sphere of what we're trying to to affect and impact, but also be as concise as possible. Um, so if some things are overlapping or maybe getting at the same, uh, the same goal, just sort of, it's okay to prune it.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand the, a little bit of the overlap between some of these metrics, um. Uh, my concern is if we deviate too far from actual wealth creation for everybody on the ladder, um, that we might lose sight of that, and that's, that's only feedback I have for the rest of us.
Has, has a modern, I'm sorry. Do you know, and it's just a question, you not necessarily should know, as we tip our toe into, uh, Community Land Trust, do we consider that homeownership or not?
I believe so, yeah. When we were, you know, we had that report from Cascadia Partners that showed the different models, and that was in the column of an equity.
So shared equity is equity.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. I, I think I agree. I just realized, oh, that's kind of different.
Just wanted to thank you for putting this together. Um, I always find data like this, you know, really fascinating. It was necessarily, you know, shocking. We've seen some of this before, but when laid out in this way, it really shows the changing demographics of the community and just, you know, um, that seems like it's becoming, you know, a place that is in terms of, you know, people being afforded to live here, uh, wealthy, um, retired people, and that really, really laid that out in stark, stark contrast. So, um, I agree. I hope that we can help create, uh, a community that is accessible to people from all different walks of life.
Anyone else? Any questions? Any discussion? So there is a motion that is recommended. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board to adopt the proposed West Side District Performance and Equity Metrics as presented.
Moved by Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mitchell. Any discussion?
Um, I don't know if this, like, has to be decided now, but I did appreciate your comment about, like, the different metrics for the crashes because I do think that's just kind of like hard numbers. If there's more people, it's kind of like a weird, uh, way to measure it. So if we, I would be like, if you have another way to do that, yeah, per mile or whatever that is, I think that would be personally a better way to do it, but.
I agree.
Is that something that you would need this motion to die for and have a clarification added to implement well?
I think so, because it was as presented, yeah. Um, so, uh, you know, not all road miles are created equal. And obviously the, um, US thirty is going, is kind of the elephant in the room. That's going to probably always surpass, you know, a, uh, an alignment D or, you know, extension of MAX's place. So, um, the way it's currently presented right now is to create a really high bar for us. Is even as more roads are built, we keep the same number of crashes. So, uh, I, I totally understand, uh, dividing by lane miles, uh, as being then controlling for obviously lane miles, but, uh, that would also essentially, uh, take the it'd be easier, it'd be easier to meet.
Is there any, since this is something that's updated annually, is there any issue in terms of like, accepting it as it is now with a directive to update the methodology, or is there no, there's no time crunch in terms of accepting this? We can bring this back?
I can bring it back and, or I could just email you, uh, dividing by the number of lane miles is going to be very easy.
Paul?
I, I agree with the point Amanda makes, but I'm not sure that I'm one up. Not, not met past this. I mean, this, the overwhelming substance of this is fantastic and just, if I see a graph that says, hey, crashes went down and I'm like, and we even had a few more miles, that's great. Like, that's close enough. So for me, I, not, I would not prefer to change this document, but I will just, I will have an asterisk in my brain.
It's time for discussion, so we can discuss. Um, it's, in my opinion, it's great if we accept this as is. However, uh, future councils may lose this kind of direction or discussion if we just accept it as is. Uh, it's not necessarily difficult to denote lane miles or arterial types or road types or that sort of thing and differentiate that out. Um, we could, if we choose, provide that as direction in the future, um, and, or the, another easy thing is just to let the motion die and then do another motion with that direction included. Either of those things, in my estimation, are also fine.
Thank you, uh, I appreciate the conversation. I think maybe just the mechanics of like, I think we understand what, uh, what you're, what trend you're trying to see, and I think, uh, if we can take this back to our department head team, I think we can, um, take a look at some different data measures and, uh, come back to you on that. So maybe something, either with what you have today, if you think that's okay, uh, knowing that we will refine that metric, or if you wanted to amend that to say with more detailed crash information, and then we can work out the details. Because I think just, uh, our planning director, our fire chief have both sent me notes about ideas that we might, uh, look at these numbers, and so we'll talk to Will about it tomorrow, and we can start refining it. But tonight, if you just give us that general direction that you want to see more detailed crash data.
So, I think essentially, you know, we have a motion on the table. If you feel strongly that, you know, something else should be, you know, added as an amendment to that and want to make a new motion, we can do that, but I'm going to call the roll now. Uh, well, not from the roll, but let's, let's hear the, the, the yeses and the noes, um, and see where we go from there. So all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Chair votes aye, so it sounds like the motion passes. Thank you, Will. Any other, uh, business from you tonight, Will? Administrator update or anything? Anybody have anything to say individually, similar to City Council comments? Usually don't. Sounds good, okay. And I'll go ahead and adjourn the urban renewal remaining and, and we'll be back to Mayor Blackmore to reconvene City Council.
Mayor, could I interrupt? So sorry. Um, before we start the public hearing, I just wanted to note that, um, my fault. Someone had signed up for public comments, but she had signed on a new sheet, and so we didn't get a chance to call on her. Uh, that was Lois Colton. She also lives near the Wilson Park. Um, so I talked to her in the hallway and just said, I wanted you, that I would pass on the message that she agreed with what her neighbor said and wanted to let you know of her concern, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, great. I'll reconvene City Council, and our first item is a public hearing. I have a script. I call to order a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending chapter two dot three six of the Hood River Municipal Code relating to Planning Commission Membership. A quorum of council is present, and before taking testimony, does anyone from council have any bias or conflict of interest they need to disclose that would prevent them from participating in this hearing? Would anyone in attendance like to challenge any council members' participation? May we please hear from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a presentation, so we will just get this, um. Uh, it's your September eighth meeting. Uh, we had some direction discussion regarding the amendments to chapter two point three six, which discusses membership. The ordinance, which is presented in your packet, uh, includes a single line uh, deletion, and includes an update that basically states you will comply with state law. Um, that's proposed amendment. It offers additional flexibility. It's consistent with the direction that the state has taken with its recent House bill change, adjusting, uh, membership requirements for memberships larger than five members. Your planning commission is a seven-member committee appointed by you. This would still require an appointment, and whatever, uh, requirements are, would go through council. There's no change. The law that goes into effect and the justice will become effective January first, twenty twenty-six. It's your recommendation from staff. Um, this motion would place this on your next meeting, uh, for first year.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, any questions of Dustin at this moment? Uh, go ahead, Ben.
Uh, I noticed there was a, a typo, um, at the bottom that just needed to be corrected. It says, this twenty-seventh day of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. I meant that for the document.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter, Jen, and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, you, you, Anna, thank you, Ben.
Thank you. I just wanted to have a little discussion with, with the council about this because I went back and looked at our, our Sep- September eighth meeting minutes, and it, we didn't actually direct staff to go ahead and draft up an ordinance on this. We actually got hung up on filling the vacancies. And I just thought it's worth, um, having a conversation now maybe about, um, like, my understanding of this is that, um, this ordinance twenty ninety-three, we haven't adopted it yet. Um, it would update the municipal code to conform with the House bill, which would allow more than two real estate professionals to serve on the planning commission. And, um, but we don't have to adopt this. We, it's, it's an option. Um, we can't say we want to have four. I mean, it would be against the law to say we're going to have, we're going to allow four real estate people, right? Is that right? But, um, we can have up to three now is what the House bill says. Um, but I just think that, you know, we, maybe we should talk about what the pros and cons of this are before we make a decision to update the ordinance. And, um, I, let's see. What, what I made some notes about this. Uh, what are the pros and cons? Uh, yeah.
I agree. That comes in just a few minutes, so.
Okay, yeah, we can.
Let, let, we're going to deliberate.
Great.
Promise we're going to deliberate. Um, any other clarifications of what Dustin asked? Spoke of, is anyone in this room wish to speak to this or online, Jen? This is the public in the public hearing here. Great, uh, and then before we close the hearing and deliberate, does council have any questions for staff or anyone who testified? So our deliberation's about to happen. It feels like you were asking a question. You're more on the deliberation, so if we could, uh, shall we close the public hearing, the public, the testimony portion of the hearing, and then we can talk? I think I'm going to close the testimony portion of the hearing and open council deliberations. Anna, thank you.
All right. I just think we should deliberate. Um, and what are the pros and cons? And, um, of adopting an ordinance that would allow us to have more than two real estate professionals on our, our planning commission? I, I think that the pro is that real estate professionals are typically more informed as the planning matters and issues, challenges than maybe the average layperson, and it's always helpful to have their input. I think that's, you know, a definite reason to say, yeah, we should have more than two real estate professionals or allow more than two real estate professionals. Um, the cons are, uh, conflicts of interest potentially. May saw progress or a road public trust if we have more than, you know, um, if we had a more real estate professionals on the planning commission. And then, um, it reduces the diversification of, of, um, or diverse representation if we have mostly real estate professionals. And then it might prioritize pi- private financial gain over broader public benefit. So those are kind of the pros and the cons that I was thinking about. I, I don't really, like, have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just think that it's something we should talk about before we make a decision.
Anna, Ben?
Um, I had a different recollection. I thought we did direct, um, staff to, um, to, to draft this as part of the three things that we were, uh, considering, um. What I would say is, and, and also, I believe that we were also trying to make this in line with the, with the state um, and what their rules were. Um, what I would also say is that, uh, it's really hard to get people to do this job as a former, um, you know, commissioner. I can attest to the number of times that, you know, we had, you know, people had vacancies on the board, um.
On the planning commission?
On the planning commission board. Yeah, on the planning commission, sorry. I am jet lagged and absent three. I'm, I'm sorry.
Doing great.
Um, uh, lost my train of thought, um.
It'll come back.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Doug, I just, uh, just to keep passing it down, I suppose, um, yeah, uh, I, I agree with Counselor Mitchell. Uh, I served on the planning commission. It's not an easy job to fill. Um, there's not a lot of people with planning backgrounds. As it pertains to real estate, uh, involvement, there's, that, that's a pretty broad spectrum as well, you know, it's, you know, we're not talking about specifically realtors or even realtors and that, that serve in Hood River. I mean, people that, that, that touch that industry would be impacted by that as we've, as we found, so, um, I'm comfortable complying with state law, um, and just making that the way that it is. And if we have tons of applicants, I think that's great because then, you know, the, the city council still is deciding. And if we have the option to say, you know, um, well, we've got a couple people involved in real estate on currently and possibly this time we have some applicants that have different qualifications but are also just as qualified being outside of that industry, then I think that's a great position to be in. Um, but as Counselor Mitchell said, you know, historically, we haven't really been in that position very often. People usually can't find the time to serve on that board or don't have, or that commission or, uh, don't have the qualifications to do it or don't feel that they have the qualifications to do it. Um, I do recall last time Counselor Cavallari as well and Counselor Rivera saying, we should be encouraging people to come out and do this. And I think we do have outreach, but always can be better. Um, I think we should look more into the outreach and less about legislation. Um, I think we should just comply with state law and, and move from there.
Since we're going down the row, um, I agree with all three of my fellow counselors. Surprise. Um, how you like that for a political stance? Um, that this, this proposal gives us flexibility to, for the council to fill these seats that may be difficult for the council to fill, might not. Ideally, hopefully we have a cornucopia of applicants from which to choose from. But it gives council, this present one and future councils discretion to fill those seats with people whose skill sets and backgrounds most aptly fit with the strategic direction that, uh, and background sets that we need to achieve the goals. We, council, uh, the, uh, physically, it's the, the skill sets that we are trying to achieve, uh, objectively. Sorry, uh, wi- with, with the goals and backgrounds of the people applying. Um, so it gives council more discretion to, to drive the, the goals and the work forward. Um, and at the same time, anyone in our seats must also be mindful and guard against one particular group of folks from one particular industry or whatever exerting capitalistic controls or those sort of influences that we all are aware of and should always guard against. Um, that's all I got about that. But it's, it, I agree that it's, as, as long as council is, and this, this is what we're elected to do, is exercise our discretion with who serves on these seats. And so I don't have a problem with this as it's written.
Thank you, great.
Um, yeah, I agree. I'm good with changing it to the state law. I definitely in general have like trepidation, I guess might be the right word, but of like just real estate people being involved a lot with city policies and stuff because I do feel like they have a lot to benefit from that kind of stuff, especially in the planning. So I a hundred percent understand that. Um, but as we found, it's like even somebody who is the accountant for every, you know, like it, they don't really have any power or gaining from that, I don't think. So it's just a, yeah, it's just for me, it's allowing more people the opportunity um, to be on the commission. And yeah, it's up to us in the end, so we can always say no, even we don't have to have three people from the real estate industry.
And the law, the state law changes in two and a half months, and so we're com- we'll be complying with it now and we'll be compliant with it then with this language. We don't have to come back and talk about it again, right? Thanks. Uh, remember, we are in the deciding business, so if anybody wants at any point to, you know, ready for that. Go ahead, Anna.
I'm satisfied that we at least discussed it and we talked about the pros and the cons. And I agree, if it's in our recent experience, it's been difficult to find people who are willing to um, serve on the planning commission, then you know, we should open it up to as many applicants as are willing to throw their hats in the ring. So I appreciate that. Um, and I just, I just think that we would be complying with the new law no matter what. It's just, you know, we, if we didn't adopt the ordinance, we'd still be in compliance with the new law. We just have the option to increase the number of real estate professionals if we want to. And so if we're saying that we want to, then I'm okay with that. I just think that we need to make a, a, a decision about that. You know, at least deliberate on it. So thank you for, for doing that.
Ben, you have that later.
Yeah, I mean, um, I think an important distinction is that like, and I know this is not really what you're saying, but um, I think the city is looking to add more real estate professionals to the planning commission. It's just.
You don't think they are. We are. You, you, you do think we do.
I'm not saying, what I'm saying is that it's not, I don't view this as the city's like, yeah, let's get more real estate professionals on the board. It's more of just like, we are a small town. It is hard to get people to serve on it. It is a, a natural overlap in terms of uh, skill set that people who work in real estate do serve on the, or want to serve on the planning commission. And so to not further hamstrung us in terms of getting applicants when we can't get applicants to, you know, limit us to one fewer. I agree with the things that you've said about, um, you know, uh, those, those conflicts. And I'd say that like, you know, it comes up from time to time that people who worked in real estate on the planning commission have had to recuse themselves from things. So I, I do agree, it's not like necessarily ideal. And I don't think it's like, we should get as many real estate people as possible. It's more of just like, we need to keep our options open as a small town. Um, because we don't have a, that many people who apply.
Great. Just one quick commentary. Um, we seem to be hyper focused on real estate people specifically with this thing. We may not be as focused on it if it was, say, uh, planning commission full of brewers or a planning commission full of uh, ski resort operators or uh, any retailers or some other random group of people. Um, so the, take, take any concentration of people from any particular industry together and mix and match as see fit. Um, but the, the, my, my intent is uh, to make sure that whoever is on this board has the background, the expertise, uh, and is acting in the best interest of the city. And this council um, should be keeping that in mind whenever uh, or whoever uh, the council chooses to appoint to that position from any, from whatever background they're from.
Thank you, great. There is a motion on page five.
I move to direct staff to place ordinance twenty ninety-three on the council's next agenda for first reading.
By Geke, second by Cavallari. Uh.
If you put in the amendment about the typo or.
With the typo corrected.
Uh, if any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you, Dustin. Uh, so that is the end of that public hearing. Turn the page. We now have the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
By Paulson, second, second by subpoena discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Discussion items roundabout. Well, actually proportionate share, but still roundabout is a.
Uh, Mayor and City Council, so this is another proportionate share study. We uh, looked at a proportionate share uh, studying um, for the Heights District about a month ago. And I was on your consent agenda the day to adopt it. Um, this is basically the same uh, uh, means and method to uh, one um, promote the development of the West Side, uh, but also to create a funding source for the eventual improvement of that intersection over on Mount Adams, which is um, one of the biggest barriers uh, to uh, approving new development uh, in uh, the West Side District. So with um, that quick introduction, I'm going to uh, hand this over to uh, John Bostick with DKS uh, to talk through um, the, the calculation methodology. Uh, and I believe he has a presentation as well. So John, take it away.
Thanks, Will. Hi, John.
Hi. Good evening. So Will, my, I've got the presentation. I'm sharing my screen?
Yes.
Got it. Let me get that going here.
I don't see it yet, John. Let's, yep, okay, it just started. Yep, I now see the screen.
All right, let me, if I, if I put it in presentation view, it'll take over all my screens and I won't see anything else, so. Hopefully you can see that all right?
Yes.
Okay. So uh, so as Will queued up, and a lot of this is gonna sound familiar from the presentation he gave a little while ago uh, about the, the urban rural district on the West Side. Uh, just to give a little bit of quick background, and this is kind of the, the land use part and then the transportation part and maybe how those relate and as Will has said, kind of why, why this was needed. Um, from the land use side, uh, again, going even back to the West Side area concept plan. Uh, that recommended uh, um, four hundred and fifty acres of um, development in the West Side area within your growth boundary. Uh, which again is most of the developable land inside the city. And so not only is that uh, is this whole area is important just for future growth, but that's also where uh, a lot of potential middle housing can come from. So as the, that's bold on the bottom mentions that the city has adopted boundaries for the West Side Urban Rural District, which includes a middle housing construction incentive for developers. And now on the transportation side of that, uh, the, the need for uh, a significant improvement, that intersection of Cascade, Mount Adams, has been known for quite a while. I think going back maybe two TSPs ago. Um, but as o- other major planning studies have been done, um, including even the last TSP in the Cascade Avenue Design Refinement Plan. Uh, what that improvement looks like has kind of continuously been refined along with more, using more current growth assumptions for the West Side area. And uh, because as you can see on the map, part of the reason why it's so important at that one spot is it's kind of really the confluence of these two arterials coming together. So all the the land to the south and a lot of land to the east as it's coming and going to the interchange, it's all passing through this point. And so uh, that ra- a roundabout has been identified as the preferred alternative there. Um, and that is uh, in your current transportation system plan. But as I'll get into in just a minute, it's a, it's a fairly significant and costly improvement as well. Uh, which can be challenging as you're trying to approve future development. And so city's looking to provide a fair and predictable fee to charge users that are adding traffic to that intersection. Uh, and also just having an efficient process for the city and developers. So uh, just kind of some of the objectives or the purpose of the disproportionate share study. Again, having a clear and fair proportionate share methodology, it's gonna allow the city to spread that cost uh, across uh, future development. Uh, they're gonna contribute to the vehicle growth rather than uh, what is kind of the most common traditional model is kind of, it can end up falling on the last person that you know, ends up quote unquote breaking uh, that part of the system. And then that could also lead to kind of a moratorium on development if it's a really costly improvement. Uh, so this will also establish a framework for collecting fees and avoids developers needing to create their own proportionate share methodology, which also creates some consistency, maybe lighten the burden on some developers to do that. Uh, you'll end up with a fee per PMP hour vehicle trip uh, that can be used in calculating those proportionate share contributions. So this formula, which uh, probably looks fairly familiar from the, the work in the Heights. It's a fairly simple, it's just the, the cost of the total improvements. Uh, the most recent refinement of that uh, roundabout improvement is a little over nine million dollars. Uh, and then that's just uh, then on the uh, denominator, it's uh, what the capacity, so how many vehicles can that new roundabout serve? And so the cost is just spread uh, across uh, all the trips that can be served. And that comes to about two thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and eleven cents per PMP hour trip. And then uh, if this were to move forward, I guess developers would have two options as far as implementing this. Uh, one would be the status quo where they can do their own study still, come up with their own estimation of how many trips their developer will generate, how many of those trips would go through the intersection. Um, that may still be uh, attractive for some developers if they think there's something about their specific development that is a bit unique and they think they'll get a more fair representation if they refine that analysis. Uh, that would still be approved by the city engineer. And the option this presents is, which I'll kind of step through in just a second here, but it's really just taking some basic information the city will provide and you can just kind of do some simple third grade math. Uh, so how that would work is uh, these proportionate share uh, kind of zones are set up. And this comes for, there's, these zones were um, based on some uh, modeling that's been done, uh, used for a number of years for Hood River. Uh, on larger planning studies, uh, that uh, takes assumptions for different types of growth, your housing employment, where it's gonna happen in the city. And then um, helps estimate what the resulting trips on the, the street network will be. And so using those, you know, the first step in here is just to get the number of trips. Uh, the city already has uh, kind of a calculator or a schedule for the SDC, so you'd use the same schedule as the SDCs to get the total number of trips. And then you just identify which zone on this map the property is in. And then there's a table provided in the, the methodology memo that says for each zone, uh, what percentage of those total trips is assumed to go through that particular intersection. So you just grab that percentage uh, and multiply those numbers. You've got your number of trips and then you've got your trip rate for, per trip that was described uh, previously. And so as an example, if you had a forty unit, a single family detached housing uh, located in TAZ, it's Transportation Analysis Zone one oh three, which again would be this big one right here. Uh, the estimated trip generation, so using the city's SDC fee schedule, that would tell you that would generate thirty-eight PMP hour trips. And then using the table that was in the methodology memo, that tells you if you are in uh, zone one oh three. Uh, the distribution percentage is thirty-one percent of those trips would go through the Mount Adams Cascade uh, avenue intersection. Uh, and so just multiplying that and also multiplying that by that uh, two thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and eleven cents per vehicle trip. The total proportionate share cost for that development would be uh, uh, almost thirty-one thousand, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twelve and two cents. So I don't know if the slide is yours, yours or mine?
Yeah, I can take it from there.
All right.
Thank you, John. Um, yeah, so this is ru- uh, roughly what we did in the Heights. Um, didn't want to really emphasize that this is about creating a predictable pathway for development. Um, this in and of itself is not gonna fund the roundabout. Um, but if we can start green lighting development, then that pairs with our tax increment financing district, right? And it starts to build momentum, snowball, and then uh, then we actually have a, a clear path towards getting an intersection improvement um, at that location. Um, and the uh, the transportation being based on uh, transportation analysis zones, I'll just also note that it gets us ahead of House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight, which actually prohibits um, transportation impact analyses for certain middle housing developments. So now we have a way to sidestep um, that requirement because now it's just, like you said, it's some third grade math um, to know uh, how many trips you're putting into that intersection. Um, so uh, we do have two prior uh, proportionate share studies for Second and Oak and for Random Cascade that were passed many years ago. And so uh, we may uh, if you uh, appreciate this methodology, we will, we'll uh, revisit those uh, as well in the future. But um, the recommend uh, suggested motion uh, tonight is just about the Mount Adams Roundabout Proportionate Share Study. Um, directing uh, staff to come back with a resolution, um, like you saw in your consent agenda packet for the Heights.
Thank you, Will. Questions? Anna, let's bet.
I want to talk about this one too. Um. I had some questions. Um. There's two concepts that were presented in our materials and one of them was eight and a half million dollars and the other one was nine point one million. Um, is it Cascades a state highway, right? And I mean, I, I can appreciate how difficult it is to work with ODOT, but um, the idea behind this proportionate share thing is to help pay for these improvements. And I'm wondering why, like, state highway funds aren't gonna help cover these costs, like forty cents per gallon of, of tack, gas tax, it goes to state highway stuff. Um, I don't know why we don't have that. We have a three cent per gallon city of Hood River gas tax, and I'd like to have a better understanding of where that's going. Um. But I'm wondering if like, could our debt, gas tax be going towards these improvements or um, and I, I just, I'm wondering if like, could the city afford to cover the cost of the roundabout with state and federal dollars or um, I just, I'm wondering if we have to do the proportionate share. And the reason why I'm thinking about this stuff is because um, we know affordability is such an important thing that we're all trying to help figure out. And I'm just seeing like, it's gonna cost a developer another thirty grand to, you know, in the example that we just saw um, to build forty houses. And of course, those costs are gonna get rolled into the cost of the house, which is just gonna in, increase the cost of the, the homes that they're building. Um, I think that cost of development is one of the contributing factors towards uh, barrier to growth. And I'm just trying to figure out if we've looked at any other options to try to pay for this besides distributing it to the developers because I think it, like, just what are our options, I guess?
Yeah. Um, so Chris can correct me if I say anything wrong, but the um, three percent or uh, gas tax we have here just minimally funds our road crew. Um, there's no additional for um, debt service capacity. Um, so that's where our road uh, our road fund, primary revenue source is, is gas tax. Um, the West Side District is a mechanism to fund this intersection. And um, so in the fiscal impact, uh, page seventy-nine of your packet notes that if the West Side And so in the fiscal impact, page seventy nine of your packet notes that if the West Side grows as it's projected to. This fee would generate about twenty one percent of the cost of this improvement, leaving, yeah, the other eighty, seventy nine percent we have to fill elsewhere. I would love to get ODOT to pay for that. Certainly, we will be trying our very best to do that. Urban renewal is kind of the next source, source of funds, but. Any money we spend on this is less money for parks, trails, less money for housing. It's only so much urban renewal money.
Did you tell us in the earlier presentation that we expected about a hundred ninety four million? That was the maximum indebtedness, right? What was, what was the stat you gave us at the beginning of that presentation?
A hundred and forty six point seven million is authorized maximum indebtedness for the West Side.
Though, just so I understand, we can, we can, we're expecting to, we can borrow up to that amount. And that's way more than the nine million dollars are at a cost to get this. And I appreciate that we want to do trails and roads and stuff like that, too. Like all the other things that were in that metrics, but this seems like it would fit nicely as something we could borrow against for the West Side District to get this going. Especially if we could do it early on in the development, right?
Yeah, what this provides for us is right now, we already had a large multifamily development die in predevelopment. Because this option was not available for them, so they were looking at what interim improvements could they actually install in real life? And it was cost prohibitive. Don't know if this, this was the straw that broke the camel's back or not, but it was certainly a contributing factor. If they would have had this, it would have been far less. So this is a major cost savings to developers over the current status quo. But yeah, it's not going to be all of it. It's really about timing. Well, if we can start to green light development, then we'll get that tax increment to access that hundred and forty six million. Because we can't, no one's going to loan, right now the West Side District pulls in. Under two hundred thousand dollars per year, no one's going to loan me four hundred, a hundred and forty six million dollars based on that revenue. So I have to grow.
They loan you nine?
No, we don't have that. We don't have, so we need some, we need a catalyst to get development going, to grow that tax increment, to access our authorized borrowing capacity. So this is a piece of that. If you wanted to presuppose. Other funding sources that are going to lower that nine million dollar figure, we could do that. It would result in a lower, a lower cost to the developers. I would maybe caution you, well, it would be fine, but you know. That thirty thousand dollar figure divided by thirty eight homes is about seven hundred and fifty dollars a home, which with the median home price being. Of seven hundred thousand dollars right now, I don't think is meaningfully impacting. The the cost of what the the home is going to be put on the market for. I think having development certainty, knowing that. I'm just plugging in this into a calculator and I'm going to know exactly how much I need to pay to get my land use approval. The uncertainty far outweighs the, you know, seven hundred and fifty dollars per home.
I have a general comment and then a question. It's, it's funny because it just kind of feels like. It's challenging to get this going because it's like, well, you know, you need to have development to spur the taxing. Increment growth, but need the roundabout to unlock a lot of that. And so it just seems, seems like something else is needed to really get this going. Because it's kind of challenging to, to do it without that seems like, yeah, it's a paradox. My question about the actual methodology was, was a little bit confused. There was a mention of a single lane option and a multi lane option, I thought, in terms of the roundabout. And I wasn't sure which option was included in terms of the final construction cost. Because I'm assuming a multi lane one is probably more expensive. So I was wondering if you could explain that to me, just so I'm making sure I understand.
Yeah, exactly right. There, the two different preliminary, and we're calling them ten percent designs, so very low level of design, but. Higher than we've gotten to before are in the, towards the back of your packet, and one shows the multi lane and the single lane. We did choose the more expensive one to be conservative, which is the larger, yeah. There's still much, much more engineering to go through.
Right, thank you.
Amanda, and then Grant.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right because it's like, sounds like, like the project that died. They would have had to pay more. Like not that they had to build the roundabout, but because they were creating more traffic, they were going to have to pay a bigger fee. So that could be part of it. This way, if we have this setup, that same project came back. Like people can start building before the roundabout gets built. And it just is a less burden on those people. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Correct, yeah. It's less burden because they don't have to do their own traffic impact analyses and do their own engineering. They don't have to go and then have it scrutinized and pay for our city engineers' time to review their work. This gives them a kind of a beeline to, to the final answer for them.
Yeah, and they would just know going into it like this is what I'm, and it makes it even for everybody. So it's. Alright, thank you.
Grant?
Yeah, I've been through that process before. It's really fun. I have a few questions. First one is, for the example used, comparing, contrasting the amounts, because a couple other councils had that question. Do you know offhand how much that fee was before this methodology? Using our current status quo methodology? You don't know what it was like? Find out later, just to compare and contrast the two.
Yeah, so the, the development that we were working with, they didn't. They didn't want to, so doing those studies costs money before you even know you're going to go forward. They only had a purchase option agreement. So they didn't want to pay the tens of thousands of dollars to do the study to get them a number. We, I think, had just estimated that adding like a dedicated turn slip lane would be something that they could build. And I think that was like one and a half million or something like that. And it would be for an improvement that was going to get ripped out eventually.
To answer other council's questions, it would have been tens of thousands of dollars just to do the study to figure out how many, how much fee to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to give you guys an idea of the volume of stuff. The other questions I had is, has to do more with the, the actual zones that were used to calculate this. And this might be a question more for DKS. On the map, we have a few things highlighted. I'm curious why. Area one oh four on the map is not used at all. I understand that most of that is in the county, but why, why is it blank?
John, I'll let you answer that one.
I'm guessing area is not in there and Will, I wasn't part of selecting the boundaries. Either it could be land that's, there's very little development potential where it's not in the urban rural district.
Yeah, no, this, so these TAZs are expanding outside of the urban rural district. I think it's just they produce them. An in material amount of trips. So you can look at one eleven. We're getting close, you know, the, the factor is in the single digits, the percentage. So it's getting to be, we already showed that even in one oh three, which is sending a significant number of trips. You know, we were at seven hundred and fifty dollars a unit. I think when we're getting into like. The single digits of distribution of trips, it's becomes in material.
And that's single digits now. Is there, is there any consideration for potential future development then?
John, maybe some more to the methodology of the TAZ and how much it's point in time versus kind of perspective based on future development?
Yeah, so the, but the modeling is, the land use assumptions within those TAZs represent, you know, future growth. So it's like twenty years of growth is in there. And that was, that was adjusted to be, to represent kind of the mix of land uses that they also represent the middle housing allowance. And so it's, that's not, they, I guess it's not based on today's land use. It is based on future assumptions.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I had similar sorts of questions as to why one oh seven wasn't, has no, isn't, isn't included in this calculation either. Because it is in the West Side area along the commercial frontage along Cascade as well, but it's not included in this. Even though some of the lots along that side of Cascade are vacant, could be developed. So yeah, I just, along that periphery on, on the side of this boundary, I was curious why, why those were chosen to be omitted from the calculation. So, okay.
Yeah, I think just, you know, I think we all drive through that intersection. And you know, if you live in the upper valley, you may drive through that intersection occasionally, but you got to draw the boundary somewhere.
Yeah, I'm understanding we have to, to the boundary, we have to draw the boundary somewhere. Given the proximity, proximity of some of these to that intersection. I was curious about the methodology for determining exactly where that boundary is. Okay, next, that was it.
All right, you satisfied us?
I'm ready. I move to direct staff to return with a resolution establishing Mount Adams Roundabout Proportionate Share Fee based on the DKS Heights District. Proportionate share study reviewed tonight.
Second by Paulson. Any further discussion, y'all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure it was correct. So it's.
Yes, it's based on the.
Okay. Gotcha. Yeah, aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you, Bill. Thanks for that good discussion. It's not. Want to quibble a little, but it's not third grade math because I mean, there's a lot of assumptions, I guess. Once you get to the math, maybe it's simple, but I mean, for example, woo hoo for the last person who just developed the thing who pays nothing, right? I mean, that cutoff is a very powerful notion. So, great. That takes us into city manager comments, but we're going to take a break first. Your comments?
And just for everyone's rhythm, yes, we're already down there, but we have like four legal and real estate things to talk about in executive session.
That's right. Looks like a busy meeting. That looks like a short meeting here, but you all have detention.
Below the line.
Thank you, Mayor. And Council, I just handed out some handouts. Those were public comments that were given to me, but I didn't get a chance to give you to you early. So I've got paper copies and I've also given to the city recorder so she can put them into the record. You know, but I'm sure publicly that our beloved fire chief, Leonard Damian, has announced his retirement. So I have contracted with a recruiter, GMP consultants. I anticipate that advertisement will go out next week. So this will be a regional recruitment, want to find somebody worthy for that spot. So wanted to let you know you'll see that come out next week. The downtown is having Halloween, I believe, please. The downtown is having Halloween, I believe, police will be at the Halloween event. Yay, so everybody stop by, they seem to have this bucket of unlimited candy, so stop by and get your fill. And then, thank you to the council members who will be attending the Dia de los Muertos on, I think it's Sunday, the second. At West Side Elementary, so look forward to being there. And then finally, I have just a request for you, I met today with the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, they're working on four homes in Hood River. Our current code for waiver of S T Cs. Says that an affordable home project has to have a federal subsidy or federal funding for it. I've done a quick look at other cities, I don't see anyone else having that kind of language, so want to know if you would be interested in me bringing back or staff bringing back. Ordinance language that would remove the federal funding requirement for affordable housing. To be eligible, not necessarily require it, but for them to be able to ask you if you would like to waive or had the S T Cs paid otherwise.
I was on council when we created that rule and my memory and please, if you know better. Let me know, but was, we had folks coming to us and saying, hey, you should help me with this good project. You know, I'm not like one of those square boring like nonprofits or anything, this is just me being a good guy. And we weren't feeling comfortable with that, so we, I remember, used federal. Funding as sort of a proxy for, you know, five oh one C three, like. Tax exempt organization like that, it, I don't remember thinking, well, we better not do it for Habitat for Humanity, which feels to me like a very. Mission driven and established and proven organization, it's just sort of a court, but they don't get any federal funding, so. That was my memory, so I think that this is a, a change without radical departure from the, from the intent. I don't know if we wanna, you wanna, you need, what's your time?
I think their time is a little bit flexible, so, but I think this is a pretty clean, could be a pretty clean fix. I think if I work with Will and with our city attorney, I think we could bring you some language at the next meeting.
I, I would be in favor of that, others? Those, great, do it.
Great, I, well, and are you all like? Do you wanna unpack more of that language, do you wanna look at the whole thing and have a discussion first, or are you good with just kind of excising that particular piece and coming back to you? With link?
Most.
I'm looking at Councilor Paulson, who looks a little bit.
I always appreciate having context.
What I wanna know is.
Picture, I saw six thumbs up and I wanted to see if I had any other comments.
How much is that, like, I don't wanna throw the baby out with the federal financing.
Great.
Amanda?
Um, I agree with you, and it'd be nice to have like a bigger picture for.
Sure. Okay, I can bring it as a discussion item next time, and then we can clean up the ordinance language after that, based on, if you have any other comments.
Thumbs on that, people?
Super.
Yeah, great, we support that, thank you.
Thank you very much, those are my comments.
Uh, committee reports, Anna?
Uh, no committee report.
Ben?
Nothing for me.
Doug?
Oh yeah, visit Hood River Board Meeting happened, uh. Not a whole lot to report from that one, just because it was a lot about bylaws and, you know, that, you know, that sort of stuff, so not a lot of material stuff to discuss necessarily, though it is very material for that, for that. You know, some minor discussion about the festivals and obviously, you know, Harvest Fest was. Not huge numbers because the weather was pretty dismal, but that's kind of the nature of the beast there, but just a reminder, that's. Where we're spending a lot of, where they're spending a lot of their dollars for, you know, the fringe seasons is coming in the form of that, so.
Was that the first year it was a combo with cider somehow?
That, that was the week prior, there was.
Oh, hops, excuse me.
Yeah, it was the orchard and ale's fest now, or the hops fest, or the cider fest.
Okay, thank you.
But that was a week prior, um, you know, it's all on the same site now.
Okay, same tent.
So yeah, same tents, they remained up, all that sort of stuff. Um, there was also a soruta board meeting, I'm not sure if Councilor Rivera was able to attend or not, I was sick that day. Um, so I'll have to check with Councilor Rivera to see if she has any notes.
Thank you. To that point, I just was taking the break a few minutes ago and noticed that one of our staff has posted a quote from Minyasui. On the cubicle and I appreciate, I hadn't read this, this quote before and I was like, oh right, I'm glad about that connection. To our community. Grant?
Uh, no committee reports, but since you brought up the, the. Events and tents were down at the event site back to back to back weekends because you can, it's far, far, far more economical.
Pound one steak.
One, one setup of a large, very large tent instead of setting up, break it down, set up, break it down. So they're able to have Orchard Nail, Harvest Fest and the Columbia Gorge Marathon. Yep, three back to back weekends.
Wow.
And so they, they all worked together to make that happen, so that, that's, that's why they did it that way.
Thanks for that context, yeah, that's, wow, three, that's fantastic.
Yep, so multiple organizations, multiple people coordinating to economize those events for everybody.
Thanks, Grant, anything else on?
No, I don't have any other committees.
Amanda, a committee?
Don't have anything.
Uh, just a couple of comments, I was at the Housing Authority Board Meeting this week and. Our good work is rippling outwards, someone from the Dalles asked about. So how come there's this funding source for the Housing Authority, what's this, what's this construction excise tax, so where we chose to tax ourselves a bit more. To have a construction excise tax to use to accomplish our goals, now, the Dalles is considering that topic and partly because of us and good job us, so it's a nice one. People see what we're doing and validate that. And also, Will, I wanna talk to you a little bit after, there's a remarkable situation where there is a housing project. Where the farm workers in that area in Roosevelt, Washington, do not qualify to live in it because their income is too high. And I'm like, show me the last time that conversation happened, so sometimes things happen in a way that is unexpected and, and. Perhaps encouraging, but also sort of frustrating and overly rigid and whatnot, but Pueblo del Rio is sixty-five percent. Occupied because the farm workers don't qualify and the feds won't change the number and. Anyway, it's a big world out there. On my mind. Uh, council comments, Anna?
Um, I would like to talk a little bit more about this institutional neutrality thing that has been brought up again, and I just, I've been thinking about it. I just, I appreciate Abigail that you gave us. The Declaration of Institutional Neutrality again to look at. We first looked at this on September eighth and I feel like it's just, I did a little digging into what is institutional neutrality? And then I went back and looked at like. The mission that is posted on our website for the city of Hood River. Is to provide essential services at the lowest possible cost to continually enhance the quality of life in Hood River. That's our mission, and I think that the idea of this is kind of to. Help us focus on that, and the business that we're doing is, is. Germaine to the benefit of our community, and I just. I think it's worth thinking about again, and I just, maybe we should. I don't know, have a discussion about it, I, that's, that's just my thought on that.
So, I will. Use my executive position here to say, I think that was a very honorable, uh, uh, opening of that conversation, I don't think we wanna have that conversation now, I would like to know. Does Anna have three friends, would, would, would a majority of council like to place that very important and nuanced? Uh, and timely topic on, on our agenda, or we decided. How long ago to, to not take that conversation up, uh, but, but, but are folks like to, Grant says yes, Anna says yes. It dies for lack of thumbs. Thank you, Anna. Anything else for, for council comments, Anna?
No, thank you.
Ben?
Uh, nope, went to South Korea, I've been up since three M and.
Oh, amazing.
My, my brain's doing its best.
Wow, wow.
Uh, I'm not gonna say a whole lot.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Doug?
Yeah, I wanted to address the comments earlier about the unhoused in Wilson Park. Couple of things that, that I think are material to that, number one, higher level. We do have a goal that is a, you know, a critical goal of ours. To be able to find a pathway to a all time shelter. Liz Tahar made a comment earlier about there's a lack of services in the summer, I totally agree, I think some of the issues that. We have and maybe some of the inconsistencies and the choices that we, that we have are. Are limited in the fact that we don't have those services, so I think that if we aren't gonna discuss that as part of. Say a bond measure, which was sort of in concept of being discussed, that we, we definitely have to keep the ball moving on. Having something address that if it's not gonna be a bond measure, so that, that's comment number one, comment number two. In terms of the information being provided, uh, whether it's the police department or code enforcement or the city. Um, I would ask that Abigail and Chief Holstein take a look at that and. Maybe you feel that it's sufficient and everybody's on the same page, or maybe you feel that there's inconsistencies, just maybe. Look into the matter, I would say, uh, in terms of, do, are we all on the same page in terms of what, what we, uh, what we. Can communicate regarding law, what is state law and so on and so forth, I think, you know, the citizens that are asking about it deserve to get consistency. But there's a lot of nuance here, you know, I remember we had a long discussion about, um, I guess, I guess maybe about two years ago now where. You know, someone was camping on the courthouse property and legally couldn't tell them to move because there was not a shelter for them to go to. Once it was that the temporary shelters were. Established, they, they could then say, well, you have an option to go here and then could, could possibly ask them to vacate the area, right, so there's a lot of nuance that's there, so. You know, number one, would be great to have a. You know, full, full year shelter, and number two, let's just make sure that we're consistent in terms of delivery, perhaps you already feel that we are.
Thank you, Doug. Grant?
Uh, I go echo Councilor Stapina's comments, there's a few state laws that. To some extent, more or less tire hands on a few things. Um, there's, but from the public's perspective, nobody likes to be told. Uh, when faced with a problem or something, um, by anybody in a customer facing role, that that's. Not my job. If in my private world, um, have a guest that comes to us, that anybody at the front desk with a problem. My, nobody on my staff tells them that is not their job, um, because they're expected to go fix it. Um, or talk with me or my staff and we, we go fix whatever problem it is, so. Um, that. It, it would be. Beneficial, I think, if we, we had a similar sort of approach, um, that, that we, that we took. Um, because I understand, uh, nobody, nobody likes to have that sort of reaction or feel that way. Or feel, feel unheard or ignored, uh, should they have a concern and not listen to, that, that's just a normal thing. One other thing that. Started last time that I didn't, we didn't talk about last time, uh, is how do. Yeah, this, this barrier that is in front of us now, are we happy with it, personally? I, I understand that it's here, why it's here and whatnot, um, I am not a fan of it, I am not a fan of creating barriers between us and the public. I would be in favor of it not being there, that's me, if there are more than. Three of us that feel that way. Yay, but that's my opinion about having any kind of wall in between us and the general public.
Thank you, Grant, that, I think most of us were here when the, uh. Violent outburst was the way it was described, I got called an embarrassing clown and profanity was yelled in my face and I didn't like that day. Um, and it came since then and I, uh, it wasn't like a council decision, it was staff. Uh, uh, trying something, um. Trying to think of the best forum for discussing this exact topic, do we wanna talk to Abigail about it at our one on ones in the coming weeks? Or do we wanna talk about it now, or do we wanna put it on an agenda? Doesn't feel like an excellent committee design decision, sort of feels like one of those. We're gonna end up with a camel with, you know, a horse designed by a committee, um. I don't, I don't know the answer. Anna?
If, if we're looking for friends for Grant, I am, I am a friend of, like, I, I don't think we need it, and I, I mean, I. Don't appreciate what happened to you and I did witness it and I don't want that to happen, but I think it's very uncommon. I just think this, as we saw tonight, it's more of a. I mean, it could be more of a hazard than it is actually protecting us, I don't know that that. Protect us from.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I'm in favor of it being gone.
All right, so we got two thumbs for that, anybody thumbs on that, we got, yeah, let's, we'll, I don't know what we'll do, but we'll remove this next time, please. Thank you, thanks, Grant, for bringing that up. Uh, anything else?
That was it for now.
Amanda?
Um, I don't have too much, but I am just curious about the S T R software thing, does anybody have? Thoughts or like, because I'm a little bit. Fuzzy about the whole thing, so.
Great.
Grant? Uh, I've used it all the time, Shabro, I gave some feedback to Abigail on ways that could be. Improved, the user experience could be improved, um, the contractual, so Abigail can provide more information about this. Uh, the contractual stuff falls underneath Oregon law, we are in Oregon, um, so all that stuff is in-house. But there, there's certainly, in my opinion, being a user. It could be more user friendly, let's say, the UI could definitely be better, um, and so I gave, I provided that feedback to the city manager and.
Well, it's my understanding that that's not what he's upset about, it's about the privacy stuff, so, and I don't. And he's saying California law, Oregon law. I don't know, I'm confused.
Yeah, I read through that contract as well, um, reading through, there's, there are similar sort of contracts with the, all the, all the other channel intermediaries like Booking, Expedia, blah, blah, blah. Um, all of them basically put out. Their contracts based on whatever municipality or locality they're from, and it says that they are, all their contracts. Fall under the jurisdiction of wherever their home base is, uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean that. Our data or our service falls under their jurisdiction. So, for example, my partnership with. Booking or Expedia does not mean that, uh, where they headquartered, Dallas? Uh, wherever they headquartered, I, I do not have to comply with, I can't remember exactly where they are.
I think Bookies, Booking's in the UK.
Yeah, yeah, I know one of them's over in Europe, um, yeah, I, I don't have to fall under EU law. Just because I'm using their service, I still am in Oregon, I still follow United States law, I still have to follow the rules and regs and laws that are of. Here, uh, and nowhere, nowhere else, um, so.
I did some follow up research on this in, around this, this coming up and I'm, I'm convinced that it's within industry standard, like, you know. Do I read every word when Apple sends me an app update, duh, no, but like, it seems like, it's one of those. It's, it's, it's like a lot of other ones these days is what it felt like to me, that's my opinion.
So, I've looked at a lot of those kinds of contracts, I did review this one too, and, um, what it comes down to is. When you have a, a software company that has tons of user contracts, that's their boilerplate. Language, and if it comes to a challenge and it's actually a lawsuit, then they could try to impose their choice of law and venue, but. It, it's, I think it's just that they're not gonna do customized contracts for every user that buys their software, so. I am impressed that people are reviewing those willingly and reading through them and concerned about the terms, um, and I. I, I know that Dan does a really good job for us when he reviews our contracts, but it's one of those, there's no way to negotiate that out, and so, um. Which could probably make it more unilateral and, and easy to challenge.
And somewhat ironically, the FOIAs that have occurred, the requests, the record requests have absolutely like. Allowed access to far more private data than this agreement in this app, so like. You know, we're complaining about a bucket when there's a fire hose.
Right, and I understand, like, yeah, maybe we can't negotiate with this company, but is there a better choice of a different company to use, you know, like, I don't know, but. Thank you all for your input, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Amanda. Uh, that's the end of council comments, anything else at this? Uh, that's the end of council comments. Anything else at this? Dan, thank you. You said that.
Uh, I I just thought I'd chime in a bit on this um software question. It first came on my radar screen, uh, the objection uh today when I saw uh Mr. Tooey's comments. And it it may be a software uh agreement that you wouldn't want to click on, but that's kind of his remedy. He doesn't have to click on it. Um, you know, so it's not a city adhesion contract. Um, if this company is violating state law, you know, the users may have a claim against those companies. Um, but I don't see it as a city issue.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Grant.
It's a city issue in that all, everybody who files uh TRT returns has to use that software.
Or not.
Nope, we have to use it.
No, well, I mean, it's, people don't need to uh obtain the license.
People have to obtain an STR license and file TRT returns in order to operate.
Then you got, that's it. If you wa- if you want to operate your home as an STR
Or, or, or a hotel.
Yeah.
So by, in effect, we are, we have to u- we have to file returns by some method required to. And the the method, being being a user, the method that I personally am required to use is this software.
If you want to have an STR license.
If I want to remain in business as a hotel, I need to use this software in order to file my TRT returns.
I would encourage you to to fight about this elsewhere.
Okay.
Uh, that brings us, unless there's anything else for the good of the order?
Into our executive sessions. So uh, I will now read my other script. City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two dot six sixty-one H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Two, Oregon, read vice statute one ninety-two dot six six oh one E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Three, ORS one ninety-two dot six sixty-one I to review and evaluate pursuant to standard criteria and policy directives adopted by the governing body, the employment related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member. In this case, the chief executive officer. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last sixty minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue the live feed and recording.